We call this a meeting of order. All the county board of commissioners, our public meeting runs to April 16th. Would you please rise for a moment and solemn prayer called by the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. Amy, public opponents?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. In the public common portion of our meeting provides residence and capacity to Butler County, a reasonable opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be employed prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The Chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal tax on the character or reputation of county employees, department heads, or any official will tolerate it. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the Chair. I will call upon you to make your order that they appear on the sign-in sheet, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and your municipality on reference. It's Messley.
From Slippery Rock, I'm Mr. Messley, the county pensions actuarial report. On April 3rd, I submitted to the county an open records request asking for the hate groups actuarial evaluation results as of January 1st, 2013. This cost study was done to determine the impact of the funding requirements and associated liabilities on the county pension. If commissioners were to terminate Sunnyview's 227 employees, which was done last month, to date, the county's chief clerk has refused to hand over the one-page document, but I retrieved it elsewhere. I've got it right here. So what vital information in this report is being kept from us? After privatizing Sunnyview, according to the hate group report, the pension's actuarial accrued liability will decrease, I repeat, will decrease, by more than $2 million. Furthermore, this declining liability will lower the county's art or annual required contribution by approximately $235,000 annually for 15 years, resulting in a county savings of more than $3.5 million. In addition, the normal cost for employee pension contributions will then shrink by $475,000 a year on additional savings. So why is the county hiding these smoking gun projections? Because McCarry and Pinkerton want to pump mucho money into our pension fund because the actual, but the actual and actuarial analysis indicates otherwise. By privatizing Sunnyview, not only does the county save future pension contributions, but it will also decrease dramatically the unfunded liabilities. If the current pension is funded at 84%, with 80% being a substantially funded threshold, then why would commissioners feel necessary to fund it 100%? Actually, Beaver and Bucks County, plus the city of Detroit, all made similar reckless moves to fund 100% of their pension, but when the financial markets correct themselves, as he did in 2008, then pension's unfunded liabilities tend to rise. Why is that? When markets go down, stocks and bonds, the liquidity funds of pension take a nice nosedive. So I ask, why put a lion's share of Sunnyview's cash windfall into a pension plan and thus risk losing it all if the economy tanks? Sunnyview's Dino Bonanza should benefit all taxpayers by paying cash for new office construction and not use it merely to boost pension annuities, including the future ones of certain commissioners. Thus, I suggest that Butler County shouldn't put as bone as eggs all in one pension basket. And thus, the only conclusion I can draw is that McCarry and Pinkerton are secretly plotting a pension grab. In short, in God we trust, but in Sunnyview's sale, in commissioners, I certainly don't. Thank you.
First of all, your statements are ridiculous, Dr. Messley. No decision has ever been made on where the proceeds from Sunnyview are going to go at this point. Secondly, according to Gatsby standards, any unfunded liability in the pension is part of the county's debt. So we have all these things to consider, and we will be considering them. As far as saying that we're going to make a pension grab, there's no legal way we could ever do that if we wanted to, and we certainly don't want to. Chairman, do you have something?
Yes, I have something to say to that. There again, people say I never agree with Bill McCarry. I do agree with what he just said. It is, we can't have a pension grab. In fact, Dale Pinkerton reversed the last pension grab, and I've commented for that several times, before we got here, you can't do the previous board. That's what Bill was referring to. You can't change your own pension. But I'd like to say this, in Itzy Messley, we went over, I think, all three commissioners, and I went over this extensively, how to fund a pension plan after the sale of Sunnyview with Jack McMillan. Jack McMillan's really good at the pension fund. I commend him for that. And we went over it, and I believe there's going to be a $3 to $4 million liability that we should put after we did this study, that actuarial study. There should be about a $3 to $4 million contribution, depending on where the market's at at the time. But Jack McMillan, who I really respect, he concurred with that, and it's our due diligence fiduciaries of the pension fund to keep it stable for all the employees. So this, it was a very hard document to read. So if you misinterpreted it, I don't blame you. I got Jack McMillan to interpret that. We had a meeting with the actuarial, the person that did the actuarial study, and explained to us. But if you just get the paper, you can easily make a mistake on what it said. But our obligation won't be about $3 to $4 million when the sale of Sunnyview comes through, and we have that obligation to put that money in there. So I disagree with some of the issues that Itzy raised there, and we're certainly, I've never had any discussions, I want to make this clear, about us doing anything with this money yet. That has not been concluded, but I agree with what Bill said there.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes from March 31st?
Pardon me?
Oh, sorry, I haven't got my myself here.
We do have additional speakers, but may I address the matter of the right-to-know request?
Yes.
Dr. Messley did file for a right-to-know request. As you know, under the Pennsylvania right-to-know law, we are required to respond to those requests within five days. On the fifth day, I sent an email to Dr. Messley because I was working with the Controller's office to determine exactly what document I was to respond to Dr. Messley's request. Since we were, we had a great deal of activity in both of our offices in the last period of time, I was not able to determine which document was the accurate one to, I mean, in that way, like they were double documents, but whether the document that Dr. Messley refers to is the one that I should refer, release to him. And therefore, I asked for several days' extension, five days of Dr. Messley, so that we could make that determination. That day is today, and I do have that document to release to him. So for him to characterize it as a refusal to release the document is in our threat, and I just wanted to set the record straight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is James Eckstein.
I didn't want to address this issue today, but Dale Pinkerton brought it up again, and I don't think it'd be addressed at this committee meeting, but I'll answer it. Actions speak louder than words. Two weeks ago, at a televised public meeting, Bill McCarry called me a jerk and told me to shut up on tape. In God we trust. In the prior public meeting, he commented that what I believe in is unjustified when I did not support the firing of a long-term ARIAN and aging employee, Joe Donaldson, by Bill and McCarry and Dale Pinkerton, and they fired him. Bill McCarry stated, "That is one of the most ignorant and stupid things I've ever heard on tape. In God we trust." Instead, McCarry's motto ought to be badger, belittle, and bully. At the prison board meeting yesterday, the press brought up the question on two county employees that saved a young person's life. That individual has a child. I was so proud of those two employees. I was moved by their compassion, their training, and quick actions. I asked the prison board, of which Dale Pinkerton's the chair, if we could discuss how to honor those actions. Dale Pinkerton's reply was, "Why would we honor someone for just doing their job they're paid to do?" I thought about the school vice principal and security guard who were just doing their job at Franklin Regional High School last week. In God we trust. This week, Pinkerton places in God we trust on the county's agenda. Now, anyone can thump on the Bible or praise God in public. That's the easy part. The hard part is living out the teachings. Judging by the actions of my colleagues over the last months, and especially over the last two years, I think they should work harder on treating others with dignity, respect, and compassion. These actions have repeatedly shown through, and they're both lacking in these qualities. Actions speak louder than words. In God we trust. To me, God signifies dignity, respect, and compassion to our fellow man. I'm done.
Okay. Next.
Peggy Abersold. Good morning. Peggy Abersold, Middlesex Township. First, I want to give a thank you to Larry Byrne, Armstrong, and the Armstrong staff for their show, Faces and Places, which they did on K-9 officers and their handlers in Butler County. The show Recognizing the K-9 Teams will be airing this week and will be available on demand if you're interested in viewing it. We have an announcement. Tuesday, April 22nd, is the Earth Day Art Show at Sunnyview. The event will begin at 2:00 PM in Sunnyview's main lobby. All are welcome to come and enjoy both the residents and the staff's art displays. Second, mark your calendar for May 10th and start your spring house cleaning for the Alameda Community Trump Sale. Come and sell your treasures at the park. For those treasures that don't sell, you can donate to the Butler County Aid Society's table at the Clearview Flea Market. Pre-registration is necessary for the Alameda Trump Sale. A single space is $5, and a double space is $8. Call our park's office at 724-284-5383 for additional information.
Next. Mark Meninsky.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mark.
I've got a short today, that's kind of nice. I think the rest of the buildings up at Sunnyview, the rest of the property should be also put up for sale, with the exception of the 911 center. I think we'll just keep it, we can move the 911 center to the new building too, but let's keep, we need a place for a district justice. Like I said, let's move the rest of Sunnyview into the new building. Building it, that's used. Also, at the same time, we're going to get that property back on the tax rolls, get them back, pay property taxes. I mean, Sunnyview has never paid property taxes until next year. That's a first. I like that. The new building, as far as the way it's been paid for, I think the money from the sale of Sunnyview should pay for that. I think it should be an all-cash deal. We have the money to pay for it, that's paid for. The $42 million bond issue I see coming up, I know it's basically refinancing existing bonds, I believe that's what that's for. Only thing I'm worried about a little bit, there's almost $5 million in fees and insurance there. I know that it's expensive to do, but boy, that's a lot of money. I'm going to say one thing about what Commissioner Son said. I don't really think we need to, for the commissioners to look after the pension plan, the pension plan for the employees. Really, the employees can treat it pretty nicely here, they really do. I think commissioners need to look after the taxpayers in their interest, I really do. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mark?
I'd like to say this, just so everybody knows this. I'm the first county commissioner in Pennsylvania to graduate from papers on pension, on pension plans. I've been thoroughly, it's our legal and, it's our legal obligation to worry about pension plans. I just want everybody to know that. It is ingrained in me after going to these classes, and it's my duty. I am not in the pension plan because I don't believe that elected officials should get a pension, and I chose not to get a pension, but let me tell you, it's my obligation, and all three of us, to do the best thing and the right thing through these actuarial studies for the pension plan, and it's our moral and legal obligation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Bob Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
My name is Bob Thomas. I am a resident of Concord Township, and I've been a lifelong resident and taxpayer in Butler County. After reading Friday's Butler Eagle and reading the letters to the editor, I read the letter in there that was against Project Labor Agreement that the county commissioners chose to institute on the hospital building project here. I just want to say one thing, one big positive thing. I've been retired for, for, well, my fifth year now, so I'm going to go back to UPMC Northwest in Reno. HBE is one of the largest, if not the largest, hospital building companies in the United States. They're an open shop contractor. We talked to HBE, who was opposed to using a PLA, and UPMC, when they started building that, they decided to use a PLA on that project. The next project that HBE went to was a hospital in Erie. HBE contacted me, as I was president of building trades at that time, and asked us to ship our PLA to Erie so it can be utilized up there. So I want to congratulate you for your due diligence on using a PLA, and it's building trades responsibility, and it's our desire, even though I'm retired now, it's our desire to make every project that we use a PLA on, every project that we compete on, a positive project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Shirley Jackson.
Just real quick on that, I'd like to say, Jim Saylor came to our office. We did mention this last week, but I'd like to mention it to the public again. They came and thoroughly briefed us on this issue of the Project Labor Agreement. None of us made that. Jim Saylor, the current head of that, they briefed us thoroughly. He did not make any, you know, quick decision on that, and I really appreciate them doing that. We made a well-thought-out decision, and thanks for coming today.
Shirley?
Okay, hello.
Hi, Shirley.
I'm known as the black cat. No, I'm just kidding. Shirley Houston, Jill, Jack, and I don't know. Well, anyway, prior, I have a letter here from Irene Stasis, where they can't find none of my medical records except for last year. Prior to the fire, I was sitting with my psychiatrist, who left. She had all of them, they were this thick, and they can't find it, and I have the letter. I requested a letter saying, "You can't find my old records, even my military records out there." I was writing that off as strange. And the past years, I've been able to be switched. I had to switch my medical from Gateway, because Gateway is not accepted here to see a doctor, so I switched it. Then I go up there, well, we know Self-Help America. So I called the White House. I have Coventry. Now, I was told by Coventry, during the Democratic, they showed up and said, "My insurance would be accepted anyway." Well, it's not accepted. And then when I want to get my teeth, my, you know, my falsi teeth or whatever, I'm told that it was up to the state insurance. Why I can't get my insurance? See, I'm going back and forth with this all over the place, and it's been going on for three years. Well, for me to get my records, it's been going on for a long time. Then I do another psych test, and they got me down as retarded. And then one minute I went to cop a ride because I didn't finish the test, but it's strange things going on here, and I just wanted to, I got the copies of my letters, okay? What they wrote, and I like that looked into because it's all strange. One minute it says yes, next minute, no. And another thing, I wanted to say, I'm getting a lot of bombardment by people in that patriot act, behind-the-scenes religious fanatics going for God. They should not be allowed to stalk, spy, set up, conspire, and in any way, shape, or form, just like I was set up for a fight. And the woman was saying it was the police officers that said I was corrupt. No, this was not happening. It was, I hit her back because I got posted in this dress. I end up getting my fingerprint, trying to get my ID straightened out. I did call the White House and let them comment, and people are lying to President Obama about everybody here, and he's doing what he can. And I would suggest that you get the right representation to talk to the president.
Dr. Shirley, thank you. I was telling you that we have no coagent other than using them as a, one of our agents with Irene Stasis, they're not a county agency.
Well, it has to do with their health insurance.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get arrested if I'm not showing through the state.
That's fine, Shirley. I'm sure Dr. Carmine's good piece, and our M.R. Martin department needs to help you.
Well, that's the welfare department. They don't have me listed on any insurance either.
I'd like to say this, Charlie, I agree with Bill. Shirley, if you stop up, I've known you since you worked on the Obama campaign like six years ago, if you stop up at my office, we'll direct you how to get the Carmen to get your records, or see if we can help you with that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You know, we can, we can work on that if you stop up enough. Not today, but I'm overloaded today, but Peggy will help you, okay?
Is Carmine in today?
Yeah, yeah, we'll help you, Shirley. Thanks.
That's all for the comments, sir.
Okay. We have minutes from our March 31st and April 2nd meetings. I'll make the motion. Do we have a motion approved? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's our approval, all business.
There is none this morning?
No. No probation?
No, sir, none this morning.
New business.
Unfairly new business, the first item, emergency services, speed five.
Good morning.
Good morning, Steve. Today, I'm coming to you with asking for approval of the final Westport project contract. This is pending final review by our solicitor. I did just get the final documents yesterday, and also contingent on all of the rest of the participating Westport counties approving and signing on for the contract. This contract price will be for $260,374.60, of which 67% we're going to pick out our wireless that we have actually waiting there, just spent for this expenditure. That would be $174,450.98. That leaves us with $85,923.62 out of our wireline expenses. I do have this budgeted under capital for 2014. So this will also, as part of this, we also need to approve a part of the contract, a maintenance agreement for years two through five, and this would be for $10,756.30 for a total of $43,025.19. Now, this is actually the first realization of cost savings for the county by our current maintenance contract is over $22,000. So this will be installation of a new switch. This will be the first year maintenance for that. This is for 10 physicians, and this is our portion of the 11-county Westport contract. So I ask for your approval now.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I would like to say, Steve, we appreciate the work you've done in this. I know that you've been one of the pushers of this Westport project, and you brought all these counties together, and it's going to be a big savings for all of the counties.
Absolutely.
Of course, we're particularly concerned about the savings that you've brought us to Butler County, and appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, technology advances fast, and that's what's driven this, so the 11 counties can come together, and I'm glad Steve's doing it, not me. I appreciate your hard work, okay?
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next under assessment, Chris Savage.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm dressed up today. You look sharp.
I love doing field work today, huh?
If I can, I'll be out for shore.
Don't look.
I'm asking for approval for an amendment to our contract with Iron Mountain, for, to move our microfilm from regular storage to a one-story unit. Our microfiche is starting to deteriorate. The cost would be $130.42 a month for a total of $1,565.4 a year. It will be also a one-time meeting fee of $532.70.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Chris, a question I forgot to ask you on Monday, I guess it was. The old microfilm, is it such a condition it can't be copied, and are we going to lose some of it because of this deterioration?
If we get it in the cold storage, I don't believe we'll lose any. That was not, when I talked to Heather Squeezy up at Iron Mountain, she did not indicate that it has been deposed that fall.
So when you put it in the cold storage, that's going to make it possible without any further deterioration?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All in favor of that?
And my question about that is, and then the committee's going to, we're only voting on not to reproduce it, but just to take this preemptive step, correct?
Correct.
And then the committee's going to look over this and make the, we'll make the final decision later, correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay, that's great.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, I also ask them permission to have eight books, eight assessment books from the 1800s be clean-dusted from particles and wrapped in a 20-pound craft paper to protect the books while the storage at Iron Mountain, a one-time $335.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And just wanted to let you know that we will be convening the records management improvement committee to see if we qualify it for the funding for the microfilm, and also deifying those records.
Thank you, Chris.
Next under human services, Anne Brown.
Good morning, commissioners. First, I have an announcement of our public hearings for 2014, 2015 Human Services Block Grant Plan. There'll be two meetings. The first is April 22nd in the Human Services Conference Room on the second floor of the building at 3:00, and the other ones will be at 1:00 on April 24th at the Community Alliance Church. Next, I ask for approval of some contract amendments for the year 1314, there with the Mental Health Association, Center for Community Resources, and Community Press Net. I ask for approval of those contract amendments.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Is there a discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And last, I ask for approval of agreement with Redwood Prosthetics Laboratory Incorporated for children to provide drug and alcohol lab testing for a period of May 1st, 2014 through April 30th of 2016, which can automatically renew or let either party run these contracts. I ask for approval of that contract.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janine.
Next, under information technology, Bob Noyer.
Good morning.
Hi, Bob.
I have two things today. The first one is an agreement with Armstrong Utilities to reroute our network cable from the Sunnyview building to the 911 building. Right now, Sunnyview is in a loop to protect that whole hill for damage to one line goes, but we still keep communications. We're going to relocate that one over to 911 also, that way Sunnyview can stop our network when they get there.
The loop will still be there, though.
The loop will still be there. It'll go, they're all under roots, so one goes up center, and one goes up the other way, and they come in from both sides to the building. So the only common place is, is the Q drive is the only place that has a common place cable.
Okay. Is there a motion to this effect? I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just...
the year 1314, there with Auburnland and Bethesda Children's. I ask for approval of those two contracts.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And last, I ask for approval of agreement with Redwood Prosthetics Laboratory Incorporated for children to provide drug and alcohol lab testing for a period of May 1st, 2014 through April 3rd, 2016, which will automatically renew or let either party run the contract. I ask for approval of that contract.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Next, under human services, communication and development, Janine Kennedy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Janine.
We are requesting approval to enter into subcontracts with following agencies with 2014 Community Services Block Grant Funding. Term of the contract is January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2015. And the contracts are as follows. Catholic Charities, $54,000. Victim Outreach Intervention Center, $32,000. Lighthouse Foundation, $5,000. Butler County Children's Center, $10,800. Center for Community Resources for the Utility Program, $25,000. Center for Community Resources for the Volunteer Income Tax Program, $10,700. And the Butler County Wildlife Association, $5,000. We ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janine.
Next, under information technology, Bob Noyer.
Good morning.
Hi, Bob.
I have two things today. The first one is an agreement with Armstrong Utilities to reroute our network cable from the Sunnyview Building to the 911 Building. Right now, Sunnyview is in a loop to protect that whole hill for damage to one line goes. We still keep communications. We're going to relocate that one over to 911 also. That way, Sunnyview can stop our network when they get there.
The loop will still be there, though.
The loop will still be there. It'll go... They're all under roots, so one goes up center and one goes up the other way and they come in from both sides to the building. So the only common place is more is the Q drive is the only place that has a common place cable.
Okay. Is there a motion to this effect? I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just so the public knows this, the loop is for redundancy in case one line goes out that the other end can be utilized, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what is common with electric wires going to your house and cable wires. It's especially important here. Thanks, Bob.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Second thing is an agreement with Inficon Corporation. Right now, we have a telecommunications line from Butler to Edmondsburg and we're footing the bill for that at $985 a month. Inficon has offered to move us to a virtual private network over the internet, so there'll be its own equipment here and that'll be up to about $1,000 maximum. And then our cost will be $200 a month after that. So we'll be saving $785 a month, which is implemented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second. And Bob, thank you for all you do at tagging our costs and I know you work on a lot of things, thank you.
Bob, I probably don't even have to ask this, but knowing you, but is this as reliable as the system we're using now, the new one you're going to?
It's actually more reliable.
Good.
Because the equipment we have terminates the telecommunications line, cannot manufacture for about five years. So if it ever dies, we won't go around on it anymore.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The motion carries.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Next, under planning commission, the CPG program, Wendy Russell.
Good morning, Wendy.
We're asking your approval of Resolution 2014-10 to designate the county solicitor as the Environmental Review Certifying Officer for environmental reviews pertaining to the Community Development Law Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Home Grant for the county of Butler. In the past, we've always had the county solicitor sign off on these reviews, but I'm not sure if a resolution was ever passed to designate this before. This resolution will ensure that the county is in compliance with these particular head based grants. We ask for your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wendy, I'm being facetious here, but does our solicitor now, does he have to go out and check all these environmental problems around?
I told you I'm getting a raise out of this.
He has to trust that I'm doing my job. I have all the reviews in my office for the CPG program and at any time, those can be reviewed by anybody.
Okay.
So he's more than welcome to come in and look at those and decide on them.
Thank you, Wendy. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say this for the solicitor, too. I mean, we can look on the work that he did for Sunnyview and trade off on the new environmental. So we can come to an agreement on that maybe.
Under the commissioners, the first item comes at the request of Commissioner Pinkerton and it is approval to adopt a resolution supporting the display of the national motto, "In God We Trust" in the public meeting room. Commissioner Pinkerton.
Okay. The mission is to promote patriotism by encouraging the elected officials to vote yes, to legally display our congressionally-approved national motto, "In God We Trust", in every city, county, chamber, and state capitol. And in 1956, the Eisenhower administration with the US Congress adopted the motto, "In God We Trust". And on November 1st, 2011, the US House of Representatives approved 396 to 9 to reaffirm, "In God We Trust". And I'd like to see that put up here in this building for Butler County. I make a motion that we approve of.
You have a motion, is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
I'd like to discuss this. I discussed this earlier, you know, when I'm Ken County Commissioner. I explained to lots of people when I went door to door that the county commissioners, I go to ask things about abortion, gun control, well, marcelish wild drilling, strip mining, and slew of other things. And I explained to them that these are state and federal issues. The county commissioners don't rule on those issues. And I believe strongly in separation of church and state. And I don't think this would... Should be here. I'm proud of our United States government. That's one of the things we do well, is separate the two. A lot of the turmoil in the world is two religious factions, whether it be in Northern Ireland, where my mother, my bride family grew up in Northern Ireland, the Catholics against the Protestants, or in the Middle East where it's the Christians against the Muslims. So I think we do a good job of that. I think this lends itself into maybe having one religion versus the other brought to the forefront. But I'd like to say this, I have three role models on the wall in my office as county commissioner, and I've had them all there since day one. One of them's a Christian minister, one's a former president of the United States, he's a Republican, and the other is the current president. And I have these role models in my office, but should I bring my Christianity into this office down here? I think I should leave it up in my office. That was my choice. And when I leave this government building, of which I'm just here on a temporary basis, you know, as a servant, should I... I'll take that with me. I'll take those pictures with me. But it's not that I just believe in the separation of church and state. This has only been done in 1.6% of the counties in the United States of America, 1.6%. So I'm with the 98.4% that didn't do it. And I'm sure that a lot of the counties didn't do it because they just want to keep it separate. It's not... I don't think it's our place, okay? And that's why I made my choice, not to bring this in here, not... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. This is a very difficult issue because of some of the things Jim said and some of the things that Dale said. I tend to agree with both of them. The fact is, though, this is our national motto. And if it's a national motto, it would have thought to be proper to display it in any governmental building. Separation of church and state is a very difficult issue. The First Amendment to the Constitution says the Congress shall pass no law favoring the establishment of a religion, I believe it is, or free exercise thereof. Now, putting a sign up is not favoring the establishment of any religion I don't believe. And we're certainly not going to prevent people from practicing their religion. As a national motto, this appears in all our currency. If you pull a dollar bill out of your pocket, if you have one, or a fifty, if you have a lot of money, and look at it and it says, "In God We Trust", or if you pull a quarter out and it says, "In God We Trust", all our coins have that written on them. And as Dale said, this comes back to the time of Eisenhower, when he was president. Our country was founded by godly men. And I would like to... I can't quote this exactly, but during the Constitutional Convention back in the 1700s, there was a lot of controversy over the different things that were going to be in the Constitution. The men had met in Philadelphia in the hot summer for weeks and weeks and weeks and there was no... There seemed to be no resolve to these issues that they were facing. The oldest person in that convention was Benjamin Franklin. Benjamin Franklin got up and made this statement. "I have lived a long time, and the longer I live, the more convinced I am that God governs in the lives of men. Indeed, if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his noticing it, how can we raise a nation without his help?". And Franklin then made a motion that from then on, at the beginning of every Constitutional Convention meeting, they would open their meetings with prayer. And it was only a matter of two or three weeks when the Constitution was completed. So I believe that we are here because God helped us. And I don't think there's anything wrong with putting that since it on our walls as a national motto. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
The motion carries.
The next item, we're asking for your adoption of Resolution 2014-11 to add approval of electronic funds transfer payments to the authority delegated to the chief clerk so that such payments may be timely released by the treasurer's office. And this would only be in very rare occasion when a majority of the board is not available to sign on on those funds transfers by the time that they need to be released. And I would like to point out that any dispersion of funds is first approved by the comptroller's office and then subsequently approved by the treasurer's office. So we would like to ask your approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss this. I think this, I'm against this. It brings out less control for elected officials. I don't think it's needed. You know, Peggy logs... There's been accusations that things clog up in my office. You know, I don't think that's true at all. Peggy logs everything in and out of my office, and she has for over a year, I believe. I'll talk to her about that later. But there is no problem. And in government, I don't want to fix things that aren't broken. We have enough things to fix without fixing things that aren't broken. So I'm against this. And I'm against it... I believe the state legislature gives us two Republican commissioners or the majority commissioners in this county and one Democrat. And I think the majority commissioners pick who they want to be the chief clerk. And I think that gives them an advantage here. And I don't think it should be done. I think it should be left. It's not broken. Just leave it the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. We're already doing this many, many... With many of our vendors, is that correct, Ben? We're already doing electronic transfers?
Correct.
So this is just moving ahead with our technology. This saves writing checks, this saves stamps, this saves somebody running down to the post office to mail checks. As it was stated, Amy isn't the one who's going to decide whether these checks are paid or not. It's a team that decides, starting with the comptroller's office. Well, first it starts, I believe Dawn gets the invoices and compares them against purchase orders and contracts. Debbie checks those against contracts. And then they go to the comptroller's office, they go to the treasurer's office. So they're being checked very thoroughly before they are approved for payment. And I think this would speed up the process of government and would cut down the cost of government. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say this. My beef is in about technology. We've moved forward with this technology a long time ago. It's about oversight. And that's what my thing is about. It's about oversight. And I think people are elected to control costs. I got elected here to control costs and I don't want to do always that oversight. And that's, you know, I'm taking out what I ran on, you know, the state for lack, so thanks.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
The motion carries.
Next, we have several items related to the Butler County Airport Authority. First, we're seeking your approval to appoint Tim Shields to the Butler County Airport Authority Board. The board has changed its bylaws to allow out-of-county residents to serve as members. Mr. Shields is an out-of-county resident, but he has maintained an aircraft at the airport for approximately 20 years and the board feels that he is going to be a good and proper member of the board. So we ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
Yeah, I'll comment on this one, three in a row. I don't usually run into this because they are not that controversial. But I mean, today we do... Look, my cousins worked for the Shields family. This doesn't have anything to do with the person that's running for this. But I object to this through, you know, they wanted to put this person on the board. They brought it up in another meeting and they said, "Uh-oh, we don't meet the bylaws. Let's go back and change the bylaws for this one person and we'll jam it up next week." I mean, is that the way boards are supposed to run? You know, you're not happy with, you know, you made a mistake. Why didn't they change it a year ago if it was such a good idea? I'm not for changing bylaws to facilitate certain individuals. And that's actually what happened here. Now, if they'd just said the timing was off or something, people can believe that if they want to, but we should not change bylaws. We should change the bylaws of these organizations, the airport authority. There's lots of government money involved for a reason, not for, you know, specific times to favor people. That's my opinion, so I'm voting no on this. I'm done.
I want to say that Mr. Shields also owns a fair amount of property in Butler County. And in the fact that he has had a plane there and that this opening just came up and they had not realized that it said that they had to be a Butler County president, I feel that Tim Shields will be an excellent board member and again, I voted to accept it.
Those in favor of the...
And I'd just like to make this clear again, this is a lot of Tim Shields. I have no doubt whether it was Chris that is correct. I just want to make that clear, you know, that it's not about the person, it's about the procedure. Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries.
The next item is we're seeking adoption of ordinance 2014-02 authorizing the county of Butler to incur lease rental debt on behalf of the Butler County Airport Authority by the issuance of a guarantee in the amount of $500,000 in favor of Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank. This action would include fixing the form, making a covenant for the payment, providing for the filing of required documents, providing for a covenant to pay the guarantee, and authorizing the chairman to sign the promissory note. This relates to the construction of two airplane hangars at the airport and this is the next step in this process that was begun in the last public meeting with your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The motion carries.
The next item, we're seeking your approval of a lease agreement with Boylan Smith Partnership. This is for the current Magisterial District Justice Office in Evans City Borough. The term of the lease is a four-year period from April 1st, 2014 through March 31st, 2018, and the lease amount monthly is $3,500. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Can we clarify this, Amy? Is that four years? You stated it, that one year. Was that a four-year term?
April 1st, 2014 through March 31st, 2018.
Okay, okay.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The next set of items are relating to the Magisterial District Office Development Project in Cranberry Township. The first item, we are asking for your ratification of the acceptance of a resolution passed by the Cranberry Township Board of Supervisors. This is their number 2014-19, granting preliminary and final land development approval for the project. We ask your ratification of that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The next item, we're asking your approval on addition scope to the existing agreement with Foremost Group Incorporated, our architects. This is to include the site development documents into and under the building bid craft package. The services include modifying the front ends of the specifications to include the various site and site utilities into the proper bid package, incorporation of the site specifications into the bid documents, rewrite of the invitation to bidders, instruction to bidders, bid forms, and scope work for each trade to incorporate the site work into their respective package, and additional time and effort for site-related work and site minutes. They project an increase of number of site visits above and beyond their current contract, and those will be in accordance with the rate schedule at an estimated cost of $450 per visit for minutes. This additional scope of services will add approximately $2,200 to the existing contract, and any additional work will be provided with their rate schedules and invoiced as required. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we're asking for your approval in agreement with Pedersen and Pedersen, and authorization for the chairman to sign the agreement for the following additional services on their existing contract in relation to this project. Prepare on site work at cost estimate, formal technical specifications beyond those noted on the civil site plans, a pre-bid meeting attendance by Tom Stahl, who is the principal engineer, RFI review of civil scope, and shop drawing review of the civil scope. The fee for these above services is $3,600, and we ask your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Discussion on this. There again, I don't know why we're women in mine. You know, I have associate degree in drafting, and we're doing formal technical specifications here on these documents. I don't know why these are doing it, why aren't we, we're not all doing it. I mean, I don't quite understand that. And I'd rather not be excluded from that procedure, okay?
Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Next, we ask your approval of the construction documents, which you've all had an opportunity to review. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Uh, yeah, discussion here is approval of construction documents. Unless I made a mistake, I looked for the specification manual on this project. This is over a $1 million project. I didn't even see any specification manual. And Peggy, Peggy wanted to get it for me. Said there's either a mistake because I couldn't review, review all this, or they're incomplete. And I'm certainly not going to vote on incomplete documents on over a $1 million project. I mean, yeah, approval of construction documents. I didn't even see the documents. I went to get them. They're not there. But there should be a specification manual. I mean, I didn't see it at all. We're talking about a million dollars here. You know, I think we ought to do our due diligence. And I don't know why, I mean, it snowed yesterday. If we delay this for two weeks, I don't see that there's going to be a problem with weather this year. Okay? So I'm not for this. I think it should be reviewed further. Yeah, I'd like to say this. I think if you review it further, also, let's see, cut costs. I mean, I believe, I really believe that we didn't take enough time. The site prep cost over $100,000 more, at least $100,000 more. I went through it, and we've got $5,000 flagpoles. We've got dry ponds that are under asphalt paving. And I think this should be reviewed. I think we should table this until we review this further to see if we can cut. The site prep for this site is $400,000. I mean, I looked right through it, and I think we can easily cut $100,000 off of it. I think we should review that. I don't think it ought to just be run through. I don't know why we're doing it. I mean, I mean, when you can save $100,000, I'm not for putting a flagpole, $5,000. I mean, you know, I'm just not for that. You know, but I went through it for the first time after a meeting we had yesterday. And, you know, these are just new. So I'm against doing this. I'd like to make a motion to table this upon further review for two weeks. And another thing I'd like to do, one thing I noticed too, is like, for instance, a general contractor is going to do the landscaping. I think it would do, I think it could be done for a better price and more efficiently if we gave a smaller contractor. This job has to be bonded. So if you divide the landscaping off, I'll just, we take our due diligence here, divide landscaping off, maybe a local contractor like Islers or Sterling's or on, we ought to do more to facilitate that. This is a small job, and I think we can cut some costs that way too, without hurting the project, dividing some of these other, the site prep up into different, not let the general contractor take all of it. So I hope that you would delay this until we can discuss it further.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second to that motion? Question dies for lack of a second. The main motion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Next item, we're seeking your approval of the final estimated budget. This is an estimate, but the estimate for construction and site work ranges from $1.316,900 to $1.434,300, and is divided as follows. Site work, $402,300. Foremost for building construction range from $667,585 to $784,950. The RFI construction review, $3,600. The land closing and other expenses that have already been paid through the 15th of April, $143,414.4. And an additional contingency of $100,000, which would include such things as the sewer tap fee and other costs that are the responsibility of the county. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
Yeah, discussion there again. You know, I don't know what, you know, this is just going through too fast. You know, if we could save 10 to 15, this project went up on our original thought, it was like 800,000, and it's creeped up to 1.2 million, or she spots off all these figures. I don't have as much problem on the building and the land. I think that was okay. But these auxiliary costs, I think they're the ones that went up. You know, just to restate that, I think we got the land for a fair price. You know, there's things in there, like there's a trailer sitting on it, an old garage. We have in the estimate, we have 20, a trailer, a single wide trailer, and a garage out there. There's an estimate for $20,000 to demolish it. I mean, holy smokes, does it take a brain surgeon to figure out that is a erroneous figure? Removing one trailer and removing a framed garage. I mean, it just wasn't done well. I disagree with pushing this through or not doing our diligence. And when I can cut out 10% to 15 or 20% of a project cost, I think we should look at it closer. That is my job, okay? And I'd like to say this too. The other commissioners always poo-pooed at this, but I'm proud of what I did, working with my hands and my degree in drafting and being in construction for 25 years and being an apprentice with my dad and uncles. You know, they can poo-poo that all we want, but we're going in the wrong direction here with a, you know, the people that doesn't have as much background in the area. And I know they'll laugh about that, but this isn't funny. It's big money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This project, as Jim says, is more than we estimated. We found out that to build anything in Cranberry Township is more than we expected because of the costs imposed by the township for various things. One thing I would point out, we're paying almost $100,000 a year for rent for the DJ's office in Cranberry Township. This building, after a little over 10 or 11 years, will be, will be paid off as far as the rental income goes. After that, the county will be saving $100,000 a year. And there's no guarantee that this rent would not go up each year because the landlord is most likely going to do that. So in the long run, this is going to save Butler County a lot of money. As far as the estimates, they are only estimates. When this thing goes out to bid, the bids might be considerably lower than the estimates. I think that we had a good architect on this. I think we had a good engineering firm in this. And I believe that their estimates and their costs are very accurate. I think that they probably did a very good job in trying to keep the cost down. Those in favor?
I'd like to say this to that. Look, I'm in complete agreement with Bill McCarrier on this need for this office. There's no disagreement at all. There again, we agree. You know, that was, it should have never went this long. Well, you should have a district magistrate's office. They're not going to divide that magistrate's office up like they would for population in some areas. It's going to stick right there because of the growing population. There's no disagreement about that. I hope we don't have to finance it. Oh, in my heart, I hope we can use Sunny View funds. So, but I agree with that. I'm all for slowing the, slowing the train down and controlling costs. And if anybody tells me, I look that over. And if you're doing, there's some erroneous bid estimates, you know? I mean, if you make a dry pond and there's, it's an exterior, it's not under the asphalt, it saves a lot of money. I believe that we should look at this further. I believe that's where the money's at. And do we owe it to the public to do our, to do this and keep that cost down lower? Absolutely no, we do. That's our job, not just pass it and say, well, we'll see if we can work it out, or it went over 150,000 over budget. Come on, that's not my job. It will not hamper this project. It's 3,500 square feet with a empty foundation, block walls, typical construction. We are not in, you know, we are in plenty of time. We need to review this further, okay?
Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
The motion carries.
Next item is seeking your authorization to allow to bid on construction for this project.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it. Is there a discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And the last item, approve the contract with a clerk of the works for the project. We would like to table to the next meeting.
Okay. We need a motion to table that?
You should have, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion in that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries.
The last item, we're seeking ratification of the allocations for the 2012 Act 13 impact fee funds. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries.
That's all for the business.
Motion to approve the budgetary transfers. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. And I have a motion to approve the new hires. Is there a second? I'll second it.
I have discussion.
Go ahead.
I have discussion here. Not long ago, the public will remember that we had a salary study done, and we haven't done a thing with it except jam it in the drawer. Well, this, I want to bring this to the public light. One of the problems with the salary study, we paid a very competent firm to analyze how much we pay, and we came up with different levels, pay levels, we paid our county employees. And we have over 700. It's hard for us to do that without this information. Just recently, I want to bring this to the public light. We threw that in the drawer, and this is, this is not, this is unreal to me. We have two employees. One got a $6 an hour raise from going from one position to the other, from a laborer at parts and recreations, they headed the bridge crew, and they got a $6 per hour increase, which was the same, same pay that the person that was there, they got for 15 years' experience. Now, why is the county doing that? You know, the person that left had 15 years' experience. Wouldn't the person that took their job over be happy with the $3 an hour raise for the extra? You know, now, you know, give them time to learn. This person is very experienced. I checked that out with, I checked that back. I was very happy to hear that. So the person did transfer. So it's not, there again, it's not about the person. It's about county tax dollars. We are arbitrarily giving people $6 an hour raise instead of maybe a $3 an hour raise to take more responsibility and just giving it out. Now, that person is near the top of the pay scale for that job too. So you're actually, you do this, and that person's right up near the top of the pay scale. Now, there was number two on that. There was two people this happened to. The next one is in Register Wilson Judy Mercer's office. The same thing happened there. These jobs are not low money. The first deputy resigned or retired and hurt office. The pay's $58,656. The second deputy took the job over, and the person got a $7 per hour raise. Okay? They just won the lottery at the taxpayer's expense. Come on now, we can do better than this. This is not my decision. That's these two guys. You know, I mean, we did this. We hired a study. This person is way over the salary study. 5,000 out of the salary study. The person, this is not about the person and their competence. I'm sure the person is competent, but wouldn't they have been happier taking the job for a $3 an hour raise and give them time to get up to the full rate? I think it's a slap in the face for people to do a job for 20 years in this county and work up to that level and get, the next person comes in at the same rate. That is not fair. Now, unfortunately for me, Judy Mercer runs this office, and she facilitated this action. She's 5,000 over the rate, okay? It is wrong, okay? She shouldn't have done it. Now, her attorney's going to say, well, he's chastising me because I'm a female. Hogwash. It's because of what she did. It doesn't have anything to do whether it's a male real officer or an elected official. It's bad. It shouldn't have been done. It's 5,000 over the salary study. And another thing this does is spike the pension plan. Okay? We're spiking the pension plan. I'm trying to call, control costs in the pension plan, and what these deeds do is take unneeded money out of the pension plan. They won the lottery, and it's a gift that keeps on giving for the next 30 years while they're retired. It's uncalled for. We have to stop these shenanigans, okay? Ask yourself this, would Interstate Piper, Dale Pinkerton, these two, these same shenanigans? No, they wouldn't. It's not their money. They don't give a damn, okay? Thank you very much.
How can you sit here and tell me what I would do at my company, Jim? I don't own the company anymore, but I would have done. When I had managers in my five branches, if one of them retired or resigned, I hired somebody, generally I tried to promote somebody from within. They got the same salary as the manager because that was the manager's pay. This man, for instance, the bridge crew, I believe he has been working on the bridge crew for 15 or 16 years. As you said, he's a very capable person. If he moves into the foreman of the bridge crew's position, he should pay what the foreman made with his experience. If we were bringing somebody in from outside that had no experience, that's a different story. I don't know what the person in Judy Mercer's office was, how many years they have there. But it depends on not just moving them into a position, it moves on, it depends on the experience they have. The salary study has not been put in a drawer. It's been worked on. The salary study only applies to non-union people. Of course, these two, I believe, are both non-union. It's not been thrown by the wayside or pushed in a drawer. It was still, it's still being worked with, and it will come out as soon as we get some other work done.
Let me make this clear.
Okay? Yes.
Let me make this clear. This Jim Bataglia, he did this all his life in the salary study. He came across and he briefed us twice. I thought he was very credible, and he laughed at these actions. When he found out what the county was doing through these shenanigans, he was sitting there with it, like he couldn't believe we were doing this, okay? So now, this isn't a Jim Eckstein doing this. This is the guy that did the salary study. I didn't pick the company. I thought the committee that picked the company, I was very pleased for what they, what, you know, the person that picked. Very reputable firm. He disagreed with what Bill just said, okay? That was his version. He thought it was ridiculous. Thank you very much.
That's funny.